Gentlemen, welcome to the City Council meeting for Monday, July 21st. I'd like to call the meeting to order and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Virchell.
Here.
District One, Morsette.
Here.
District Two, Yaku, Rod.
Here.
District Three, McCormick.
Here.
District Four, Weber.
Here.
District Five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District Six, Vanslow.
Here.
Anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council, now's your time. Tracy Hall is here from the Police Department that would like to address the council.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about National Night Out. National Night Out is a nationwide event that's held the first Tuesday of August every year. This year will be August 5th. It's a community-building campaign to heighten crime prevention awareness and to support our local anti-crime prevention programs that we have such as Neighborhood Watch, strengthen the police and community partnership, along with having fun. First time this year we'll have it centralized down at Lakefront Park. We'll have it from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. There's going to be several different organizations there to participate with us such as Fire and EMS, the DNR, North Hudson Sheriff's Office, Youth Action Salvation Army, Victim Witness, Turning Point, just to name a few. There's going to be several different activities such as a bounce house, a dunk tank when you have an opportunity to dunk a police officer. We'll also do child ID kits for fingerprinting. We'll have food for free will offering and the money we raise will be donated to a charity. We just haven't decided which one. There will be a taser demonstration at 6:15 and a canine demonstration at 7:00. I'm here to personally invite each and every one of you, along with the community, to come and join us that evening.
Any questions? Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
The first Tuesday or second Tuesday?
First. First Tuesday, which will be the 5th.
Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda? All right. If not, Madam Clerk?
To approve the regular meeting minutes of July 7th, 2014, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $471,612.31. Additional information is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve one regular operator's license for the period July 22nd, 2014 to June 30th, 2016 contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city. Additional operator license application information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the renewal of the tax collection agreement with St. Craig County for the preparation and collection of real and personal property taxes for a one-year term from October 1st, 2014 to September 30th, 2015. To approve authorization for participation in the state debt collection program. To approve installation of a stop sign on Freer Street at 13th Street. To approve the St. Pat's Fall Fest 5K Fund Run Walk on Saturday, September 20th, 2014 as presented. To place and file the July 2014 investment report, the June financial report, the building inspector's quarterly report, the Hudson, North Hudson Community Access Board minutes from June 24th, 2014, and the St. Craig EMS Commission minutes from July 16th, 2014. That ends all.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yaku, Rod.
Yes.
McCormick.
Yes.
Hoggatt.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Vanslow.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes. Okay, next item on the agenda is from Finance, a discussion and possible action on premise description change for Chacony's liquor, Class A liquor, Class A beer at 2312A Crestview Drive. I think you have that in your pocket. The Finance Committee recommended approval and that all outstanding debt is paid to the city and...
Surrender of the current license and successful building inspection.
And a building inspection because they're remodeling there. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5B, discussion, possible action for additional funding for repairs for the sander and auger on the 2001 Freightliner truck. Mr. Zullo is requesting $625 be taken out of the repairs for equipment from the sale of public, sale of equipment. There's a balance in there and the $625 would come out of there. The sander, there's $3,000, $3,010 being reimbursed from the insurance company and the balance will come from that fund if you approve that.
I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Tom, why don't you come up for this one? 5C. Basically, it's discussion, possible action on the Stone Pine Stormwater Pond repair issue. If you want to walk through that a little bit, Tom, just if you can give us a quick background on the number of bids we had and FEMA and those kinds of things.
This storm pond was damaged in the June 2013 storm. It was the end of a drain pipe that goes into a storm pond, completely fell off and the area eroded and we have a very, very large washout. FEMA came and we assessed the damages. They said they would reimburse the city $11,943. We had, actually at that time, both engineering looked at this area and recently Tom Sifko, City Engineer, and I looked at it and bid out the project according with city standards. We put the bid out, the project out for bid, Zappa Brothers Construction came in with a bid of $42,828. So we're asking $30,884 to come from the Stormwater Utility Fund.
There's roughly $77,000 in that fund.
In the collection maintenance part of it.
Yep.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion on that? I think one of the items, I think Randy had asked about why the big difference between $11,000 and part of it has to do with putting the road in and then there's more riprap that we need to put in based to our standards? Would that be a...
Both things are true. Access to this area was very difficult. We're going to remove some trees to get access to the dam, you know, to get the repairs done.
But they underestimated the riprap bid to our specs because we needed 2,500 square feet?
Their estimates was like 4,000 or 5,000 cubic yards of riprap after Tom and I measured it and maybe there was some more damage since then. We've had a lot of rain since then also. We estimated that we need about 20 or 25 cubic yards of riprap. And the access road was additional, you know, cost also.
But didn't we talk about you, your department was going to do that?
It was just a little beyond us, you know, to get the trees removed and...
Equipment?
We did a couple up off of Hagan Street. We've done the Stone Pine, or excuse me, the Chestnut Drive. We've done five or six ourselves and we just felt that we couldn't do this one and we have another one that we may have to bid out up on the Coach Flight too, but anyway.
Questions? Where's the road going to come from? How are you getting to that pond?
Grandview.
It's just off of Grandview Drive down in that lower area.
Kind of across from where the walking path comes from.
South of Stone Pine Bay.
Court.
Stone Pine Court.
The walking path, Jim, that you come up? I think it comes right...
It's right across from that then to the east of that. And we're not making like a road. We're just going to be removing trees and it'll just be a natural cleared area. We're not going to be, you know, removing any stumps or uprooting anything, so...
It's not going to interfere with the path or require any repair there or anything?
No, it's on the other side of the road.
All right. That's what I was trying to figure out. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tom? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tom. Discussion, possible action on the lift station modifications in Stone Pine and Red Cedar Canyon subdivisions. Tom, are you going to do it or Karen, do you want to talk about this a little bit?
I can talk.
All right.
We worked with Jim Schreiber on this project and its modifications at two sanitary lift stations, one at Stone Pine and one at Red Cedar Canyon. The one at Stone Pine, we're doing improvements to the, we're putting in new pumps, taking out the old ones that are at the end of their service life, putting in new, better efficient pumps, new generator, a new metering manhole that's not there. And then at Red Cedar Canyon, we're putting in a generator. So if there's any power outage, the department doesn't have to worry about that lift station and they can concentrate on other lift stations in the community. We opened bids on Wednesday, July 16th. There was one bidder and it was Pembroke Companies for $563,300. I did discuss this with Jim to see what he wanted to do and he recommended that we do award this project for that price to Pembroke.
Initially, we thought it would be $350?
We did think it was going to be $350. If we had five companies that pulled the plans and only one company bid on it, it is right now getting to a short timeframe and we will start losing some funds if we don't start this project now.
And if I'm saying this correctly, those funds that we collected when the development went in and they have to either be utilized or given back.
Impact fees, yes.
Impact fees.
And I think it's Red Cedar Canyon that you're about to lose funds on if I...
Yeah, I think it's that and probably several other developments that happened in the early 2000s.
To the issues that we wanted to fix, so...
I'll move for approval for Pembroke Companies, $563,300.
I'll second that. Okay, discussions, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 6A under 6, discussion and possible action on a Class B beer and Class C wine license for D3VEC LLC DBA Cheers Pablo. Catherine?
Well, this, as you know, was postponed because the applicant requested the opportunity to put in additional information, which they have. I reviewed it as outlined in my memo. I think we're still at the same issue is furnishing food, furnishing food the principal business of this proposed business. And as stated in my memo, no information was provided by the applicant on the income likely to be generated or projected to be generated from the painting activity. And I think that's a key, obviously key component of the business. And within those factors that the council considers to determine principal business, income is one of them, looking at the various sources of income. So it's not a matter of just comparing food to alcohol. Under the city ordinance, the principal business of the proposed enterprise needs to be the furnishing of food. So there needs to be a comparison, in my opinion, of all three activities and is food the main source of income for the business. There's other factors as outlined in the memo that the council can look at, labor, square footage, and so forth. I don't want to repeat everything that I put in my memo. If you have questions, I'm certainly happy to respond to them. I also just pointed out that the council needs to be mindful of, you know, any decision it makes in this matter is likely to be used in the future as a basis for either support or non-support of a future application. And so how you determine what is a restaurant or what you determine to be a restaurant, principal business furnishing of food, as stated in our ordinance, is going to make a difference not just for this application but for future applications. My opinion hasn't changed. I did look at the, and provided you information from the Woodbury operation just on what the charges are for the painting sessions. And those charges, at least on the website, were $30 to $50, whereas the maximum price for a food item is $6. And this was $30 to $50, I assume, per person. It was stated in persons can register online for, to participate. So that money is, it appears, again, I'm, they didn't provide any information on that aspect of the business, so I gleaned it from Woodbury's website. But that money is paid for upfront, I'm gathering, by registering online. So based on, basically the charges for the painting, some of the photographs showing the tables and the square footage, I, my opinion is it looks like painting is the primary activity. This is a local ordinance. It's not a requirement in the state statute, but it is part of the city's ordinance, so the council needs to follow it.
Or we change the ordinance.
But the council determines, correct. But that's not, yeah, if that's something the council wants to look at, that can certainly be done at a different meeting. Just, and I can give you some historical perspective on that because there's been other businesses in which this issue has come up and the council has chosen not to change the ordinance.
Could you give us a brief history on that, though?
Well, there's been two situ, well, that I'm aware of.
Why we put it in our ordinances?
Oh, my understanding is, and it was in the ordinance when, pre-2000, when I started as city attorney, is that the city was trying to get away from the proliferation of bars in Hudson and try to make it more of an attraction to people who want something more than bars. And again, that's not based on, that's based on what I've heard and what was discussed at the last, I think the last time it came up was with respect to golf links. I don't know if any of you were on the council. That was a business, I mean, I'm not casting aspersions on any of these businesses. Understand it may be a great business, it's just doesn't meet the requirements of the ordinance. That was a business where they played virtual golf. I don't recall as we speak if they offered any food.
Hot dogs.
I think it was minimal and they also requested that, and in fact, in that situation, the license, they had a license. It was issued in error because they did not have a restaurant permit and they did not, you know, the principal business wasn't furnishing of food. In that situation, the council looked at whether to amend the ordinance. I believe that was in '06.
It was, but it was not unanimous, I can tell you that.
And the council decided, that's a policy decision that's, you know, it's not my decision certainly. It's not on the agenda for tonight. It can be put on a future agenda, but right now the issue is whether this application meets the city ordinance.
Are we not allowed to make exceptions if we want to? It's just to set in the precedence that you're worried about or...
Well, I don't think you can just, no, I don't think you can have an ordinance on licensing businesses for service of alcohol and just ad hoc make exceptions. You've got to follow your ordinance or change your ordinance.
But...
You also mentioned a state law regarding underage people being in an establishment?
Well, there is, I mean, that again also turns on whether it's a restaurant. I gave you the basic laundry list of exceptions. In talking with the Department of Revenue, although they did say in fairness, this is, whether the principal business of, is furnishing of food is a council decision to make under its ordinance and under the state definition of principal business because the ordinance refers to that. But they questioned it.
Well, I don't know how they could question it so much when they've allowed or certain municipalities in Wisconsin have allowed tenant of these.
But they may not have, what Hudson has is not required under state law. The City of Hudson is authorized under the liquor, state liquor laws to adopt more restrictive requirements for alcohol.
At our discretion.
Pardon?
At our discretion.
Correct.
Yes, but the city has adopted those and they are the law in the city. So it's not a requirement of state law. So in these other cities, for example, they may not have that requirement in their alcohol licensing ordinances. The City of Hudson does.
So then what would be if this council is in favor of granting this license? You're saying we shouldn't do it tonight, we should change the ordinance first and then...
Well, you, yeah, you would, that would be a different agenda, you'd need to have an agenda item desiring or directing me to at least come back and have a different, you know, remove that requirement. I think the other reason for keeping it back in '06 is that the Class B beer license is quite broad, the types of establishments that are allowed to have Class B and it's not well-defined. And that was another concern, I believe, of the council. For example, you can have combination novelty stores slash taverns, grocery store slash taverns, sporting goods store slash taverns, recreation premises slash taverns. There aren't any definitions in the statutes for those types of establishments. So if you remove this restriction, you also need to understand what you're getting in its place by going just under state law. And I haven't provided that to you because no one's, I didn't get any direction that this is something the council wants to consider, but I certainly would.
But just because we remove it doesn't mean we have to allow those other, we don't have to allow all those establishments in. We get to determine as a council which establishments we want to be in the city and which we don't. I mean...
Yeah, and you're going to have to define them. And just novelty store slash tavern, restaurant is something that's fairly objective and identifiable. The other types of establishments that are eligible under the statute is more difficult to predict and more difficult to define.
Well, just to, I'm seeing a whole lot of kitchen equipment here, Appendix A from what was submitted. It seems like there's, where's the line here? It seems like they're going to have a full kitchen and be served food. Is this true? Can, would it be okay if we heard? Can somebody hear?
Good evening, thanks for seeing us again. My name is Ben Drayer, co-owner. Yeah, as far as the build-out goes, can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right. So as far as the build-out goes, there's going to be over 50% of the capital is going to go to this restaurant or the kitchen area and meeting all the codes to be a restaurant in the state of Wisconsin. As far as the equipment goes, as you can see, nothing is just, it's not a George Foreman grill that we're pulling out of our kitchens. It's all commercial-grade equipment, as you can see, along with the cost.
So you have the ability to grill your menu very easily if you chose to?
If we chose to, we could, yes.
Well, it's not a matter of choice. I mean, principal business needs to be the furnishing of food. And I, I mean, I'm not trying to argue, but I would just point out that the information showed, in my view, some type of panini grill and a convection oven.
But, you know, I just, I want to see businesses like this come into our city and give it a chance and our ordinance is restricting that. I think we all have, our adults make decisions on your examples of novelty slash liquor. I mean, we're not going to make those choices. We've been down that road and I think we've put some good ordinances in to prevent that, i.e. which is gone now.
Did you bring the Woodbury numbers at all with you? You said it was 60% food service, 40%?
Well...
It's supposed to be food versus liquor, right?
No, it's not. It's principal business is the furnishing of food. So here we've got painting, we've got alcohol, we've got food. You have to take into account the painting.
When you look at the business, Catherine, I think you point out in here that a hair salon or an art studio or somebody else is just going to open up and start serving food. My question on that, when I seen that, was what hair salon or nail salon is going to spend $50,000 on a kitchen in order to start serving food to be able to get a Class B or Class C license?
I'd say you'd be surprised.
I think there have been inquiries actually to the city clerk.
Yes.
On those types of businesses also requesting, you know, can they be, are they eligible for licenses?
We've had some. Okay.
So art galleries, yes.
Is there any gray area? How close are we on this? I mean, if they say they're a restaurant and have our classes or, I mean, I guess, are we way off or...
Well, I think, I think one of the things that I looked at was if you look at the food price range from $1.50 to $1.60, or to $6, I guess it's not a wide, based on the information we've received, it doesn't look like it, it looks like the primary, if $35 is for the class, the primary source of income is the art class, not the food or the liquor. That's how it looks to me, based on the information that we've received.
I think in the numbers there, I think a portion of those numbers is, I mean, we could kind of play around with those numbers however we wanted to to make it look right for you guys. We were trying to just show you what the business is.
Right.
I mean, in that, in that $35, there's included is the coming in, the experience, there's water, there's snacks that we give out.
Sure.
So that's all included in $35.
Okay.
Then we had, in addition, I mean, that's basically everything you purchase online before you get to the class itself. And when you come to the class, another portion of it was labor. You come in there, artists are there, our manager is there, our staff is there, all greeting you, all helping you. They all are cross, cross-trained, sorry. And to be able to do everything in that facility, whether it be serve liquor, make a panini, make a pizza. So I think the food and we can make those numbers different, but we chose not to. So when you come into the actual event, you're coming in there to grab a glass of wine, grab some dinner after, after work and sit down with friends and family and paint a picture and continue to eat food while you're there, along with the private events that we're allowed to have there as well. There's birthday parties, lots of other things that are included in that as well.
Do you have a copy of your, of your food? Is there a, is there a menu?
It's right here.
It's pizza and paninis.
Pizza and paninis.
It's a page, I don't know.
It's not for this body to dictate their food. Well...
Karen has a statement in her that we can take into consideration whether granting a license for this business is in the best interest of the commercial development of the city, which seems to allow us some leeway around whether or not this is a restaurant or not. They're serving food. They're serving more food than alcohol, which is, I think, is something that we want. But that would certainly...
Do you know that, Jim, that they're serving more food than alcohol?
Well, it's based on the, on the Woodbury numbers. It was 60/40, so wouldn't expect it to be a lot different here.
But the overall, but the overall income is coming from painting fees.
Yeah.
Well, you can't walk in the door without paying a painting charge.
Which is, I'm saying let's get away from this restaurant as the primary business and look at this, no, and look at this commercial interest piece.
You'd have to change the ordinance as well.
No, you wouldn't, not according to this.
Well, you can't ignore the portion that says it's got, its principal business has to be the furnishing of food. You have to make that finding of this application in order for them to be eligible for a Class B beer license.
This is where government gets frustrated. We have six members of the council, probably the mayor as well, but you don't have to vote unless there's a tie, that are willing to bring this establishment in, obviously from how we're discussing. I don't remember the last time we've all agreed on something so calmly and we can't even do it. I mean, I just...
It's not on the agenda. No, you can't change an ordinance without putting it on the agenda.
So can we approve it based on an ordinance, contingent to an ordinance change?
Well, I think you postpone it and you bring back the issue of changing the ordinance.
Or we can approve it based, contingent on an ordinance change.
Well, will this business model work? Will the business model work without selling alcohol? Probably.
What did you say?
Will the business model work without selling alcohol? Probably.
Yeah.
If you're selling paninis and pizzas and that type of food, do you need beer and wine to go with it? to go with it?
No, but that's the fact.
Is it essential, is it essential for the business model, which is basically to do painting lessons?
This is, no, it's not. The business model is not for painting, for painting lessons. It, it's, it's a social thing where you have a ladies' night out and you go and you have a glass of wine, you paint something goofy and you laugh all night long, that's what, at least I did when I would go there.
You can't have a social event with other types of drinks, with other types of, you know, other types of beverages that are available today?
Do we have social events?
The variety of beverages available to people is huge today.
Yeah, you, if you're pregnant, you'll, you'll have something else proudly, but I mean, as a woman, but yeah, you'll go have a glass of wine or...
The question becomes, it's, do we want, do we wanna give up these beer and wine licenses and then have a, a desirable, highly desirable restaurant?
Restaurant, a restaurant that wants a...
We don't have any licenses.
But they'd get a liquor, liquor license.
And we don't have licenses left for them.
It's a different license.
No, it isn't, it's exactly the same thing. It's a beer and license.
There's full liquor and then there's beer and then there's wine.
Okay.
We have some full liquor, but if a restaurant wanted to come in, simply have beer and wine.
How many of those do we have available?
Three beers, Nancy, right?
Three beers, six wines.
And four liquor.
And we have several full liquor licenses.
Four, four or five.
Reserve licenses, but they cost ten thousand dollars.
So how long have we had, I mean...
And there's no restaurant requirement with the full intoxicating liquor license.
And if we start changing the ordinance to allow any type of business to have these licenses, they'll go very quickly to all kinds of businesses. And we're not gonna have a basis for denying them.
So we, we've turned down a business that we know is a success in every other area.
I don't think we're turning them down. I, I don't, I don't look at as we're turning them down.
We're looking at them saying, come on in, just don't serve beer and wine and change the name of your business to, to, uh, Non-Acabolic Pablo?
Don't have to, don't have to change it.
I mean, what do you call it then? It's Cheers Pablo for a reason.
Okay, I think that's enough now on that. Let's decide whether or not we wanna continue on. I don't think we can grant a, a license under the, our ordinance that we have tonight. I don't know if anybody else thinks you can. Jim, you might think we can here, but I, I think we need to change our ordinance. If, if, if the council desires to change the ordinance, I think we need to come back, we'll put it on the agenda and, and debate whether or not we wanna charge it, change it versus, I mean, I don't think we can solve that anything tonight.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion to deny the Class B beer and Class C wine license.
Okay. Is there a second?
Based on, based on the current ordinance.
Is there a second to that? Okay, it dies for lack of a second.
I'll make a motion, postpone this to the next, to postpone this and to try and have Catherine work up, uh, change to the ordinance to, uh, consider certain businesses such as, as this one, to, to obtain a Class Beer, uh, Class A, is it Class A beer?
B beer, Class C wine.
Class B, those licenses.
Okay.
Second discussion.
There are several cities listed in here who, in Wisconsin, who have done this. Can, would those be sources of information about how?
Oh, sure.
They've managed, to try to manage the balance and, and whether it does or not?
Some, it's, it's a city requirement.
Right.
That has this furnishing of food as being the principal. Other cities, that's not a concern for them, so, but I can certainly contact them and see if there's any issues.
Yeah, I, I'll just say that I think pursuing changing the current requirement is a mistake for the City of Hudson, and I'm not gonna be supporting it.
Okay. We have a motion, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Do you want that on the next agenda?
Yes.
Without ordinance?
If we can get it done by then, yes. Uh, Item 6B, Discussion, Possible Action on Ordinance 7-14, Ordinance Anexing 12.3 Acres North of Stage Line Drive at Old Highway 35 East of Hudson Cinema, SSHD Inc.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Plank Commission recommends approval of the annexation of the 12.3 acre parcel as petitioned by SSHD Incorporated, with the condition that developer execute the annexation agreement. Annexation agreement has been presented to, uh, representees, Mr. Jim Effort, Mr. Dan Bauer. SSHD, there's four very minor changes in the, uh, annexation agreement from what you received in your packet, but they're not a, any substantial change, they're more editorial, uh, editing-type considerations. Um, Mr. Jim Effort's here tonight and had first reading this ordinance on, uh, July 7th, uh, so the action tonight would be year two, consider adoption of Ordinance 7-14 or, uh, no action or, or denial of the ordinance.
Is there a motion?
Um, moved.
Suspend.
Okay.
Well, we had a first reading.
Yep.
We had a first reading.
Yep. Is there a second? Okay. Discussion. Any questions for Danny?
Listen, there are a, a question earlier about whether the, the sewer and everything meets the city requirements.
Yeah, the, yeah, what, and part of the development agreement is, is we will, uh, inspect those and they will be required. Uh, I've driven, has, uh, looked at the streets and curb and gutter, everything looks fine. Uh, they were built to city standards, where we don't anticipate, but we would have those televised just to make sure that everything's okay. But we would not, they'll have to come back with a revised certified survey map and that will be our leverage, uh, to make sure everything's okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Darnold or for the applicant? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Discussion and Possible Action on Insurance Requirements Related to Special Events Permits. Catherine, you wanna kind of lead us into this a little bit?
Um, okay. I guess, I think I've said this before, the, the issue came up regarding special event insurance certificates and the city's ordinance says three million. There's been a consistently applied reduction to a million dollars in liability limits, um, for nonprofits and community events because they had come to the council at the time the three million was put in and said, that's just, um, too expensive for our group. Uh, in the course of going over insurance requirements, um, there also be, arose issues regarding additional insureds. We, the ordinance requires that the city be named as an additional insured on the policy. Um, most certificates say, hey, if you don't have an endorsement, you're not really an additional insured. So we've asked for endorsements and people have been providing them, but when you read those endorsements, they say, um, that they're basically, the city's policy comes first and their policy will come second and our insurer recommends that we require, as part of the ordinance, that we be additional insureds on a primary, non-contributory basis. And what we found is they will provide us an endorsement to that effect if it's in our ordinance and on the application. The application is viewed as a contract and it is set up pretty well as a contract, but we would need to have that in our ordinance and on the application to be able to require that the city be named as an additional insured on a primary, non-contributory basis. Um, other than that, um, finance discussed coverage, you know, limit requirements, and it seemed that the, the committee made a recommendation to put in a range of one million to three million based on, to amend the ordinance and put that in based on the nature of risk associated with the activity or the, something like that. Have that in the ordinance so that there's at least some basis for the one million that frankly, all applicants have been only providing one million. Um, and then have a policy separate from the ordinance that maybe flushes out some of the considerations that will be taken into account, but not have that as, uh, you know, hard and fast, like, well, I don't know if Oshkosh is as hard and fast, but just more of, give you considerations so that you'll have the basis for articulating if you require a higher limit, like the three million, why it is you're doing that. Because you will need to do that. It can't just be based on, oh, we know these organizations and so forth. It does need to be based on some criteria regarding the activity. So I think those are the two things coming from finance, um, primary and contributory basis for the additional insured and putting in the range of, um, coverage from one million to three million.
And this is a policy, correct?
Well, those two things would require an ordinance change.
Right.
And then we could have a separate policy that I can maybe go, bring back using some of the risk factors that Oshkosh does, but the council will be able to apply them as it sees fit based on specific applications. There won't be this, you know, low risk, medium risk, high risk, it'll just be a, a variety of factors. Does that cover it pretty much?
I kinda like the low, medium, high, it's pretty well spelled out, but...
Yeah, that was just the finance recommendation, so...
Yep. What do you think?
We're not making a motion, all right?
To direct her to...
Oh, okay, I'll make a motion to direct Catherine to, uh...
Spend more money.
Go, go back and write up, it's awful. Change, and, and work on, uh, changes to the current ordinance and create, also create a policy. Do we need to do the policy?
Yeah, it'll probably be pretty brief unless you, I mean, if you say you like the Oshkosh, then...
No.
I don't like the Oshkosh.
But it'd just be more, yeah.
Based on finance recommendations.
Those types of factors.
Yep.
Risk factors relating to the event.
We have not required anyone to give us three million dollars, at least, I think we checked and it was this year, a million was the maximum, so...
I think it was, again, it was recommended by the city's insurance policy at the time we, the city adopted this ordinance, and the concern was if there's some large event that has a lot of risk factors, the city wanted the ability to require a higher liability limit.
And I don't think that's unreasonable.
Did you get a second?
Second, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. New business, Discussion and Possible Action on CSM to create a, two zero lot lines at 1117 and 1121 Summer Street. Mr. Darnold.
As the issue sheet stipulates, this certified survey map was approved in 2009, but was not recorded by the Schrummers that live at, um, 1117, 1121 Summer Street. Essentially, this certified survey map creates two zero lot line lots with a, a zero lot line running down the middle of the duplex. Um, state law was changed a few years ago where, uh, certified survey maps, plaits had to be filed, uh, within twenty-four months after the first approval of, of the document and the recording was not done, so it has to be, uh, re-approved by the city before it can be filed. Again, something the city approved before, recommending approval again.
Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion, Possible Action on the easement, uh, agreement with Cheryl Bell to construct a fence and a drainage and utility easement area.
Good evening, David Gray, Building Inspector. Uh, Ms. Bell lives, uh, seventy-two, lives and is the property owner at 72 Metal Arc Drive in the Hudson Metals subdivision. Uh, she would like to erect a fence around the perimeter of her backyard. Uh, she has a storm sewer that runs along, along her rear property line, uh, that's the reason for the easement agreement. Uh, Ms. Bell has signed, uh, that document and would like to, uh, proceed, uh, with, with erecting her fence.
You're, as a city and, uh, Building Inspector, you think this is, is okay, all right?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
For approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Yep, and then in the future, would, would it be okay to put these on consent or would you...
Sure. Unless somebody pulls it off, but I think, yeah, that would, everybody okay with that?
Yeah. Just remind someone to do that.
Thank you. Discussion, Possible Action on Transfer of Rescue Operations from St. Cro E M S to the Hudson Fire Department. We get both of the chiefs here tonight.
You better believe it. You're in good hands tonight.
Okay.
We are, but not out there.
That's all right. You guys are first. Um, so, this has kind of been in the talks for a couple of years now, um, ever since, well, since I first started, uh, full-time, it's been in the talks and that was in twenty, 2011, and it, it just shortly happened that we went joint rescue at that point. Um, since then, we've had a continuation of incline of EMS calls and we just can't staff our rescue truck the way we want to anymore. Um, the reason that it kind of waited as long as it did was because it really was hard for our staff members. Our staff members, some of them have been on the service for sixteen-plus years, they don't wanna give it up. It's something that was different, it was unique, it was something that St. Cro EMS had. It was EMS and rescue both, and they had both components. Um, over the past couple of years, we've noticed that we can't staff that rescue truck. Fire with the joint rescue has been coming over and taking the rescue truck out on calls because we need our staff on ambulances. Um, we've had at times three, four, five calls going on at the same time and we've had all of our ambulances, including ambulances from other cities coming in. So we've just gotten to the point where we've unfortunately gotten too busy. Um, so what we would like to do after speaking with, uh, Chief St. Martin about this as well, is transfer over auto extrication and high-angle rope rescue to the fire department and St. Cro EMS would continue to, um, operate the dive team. Um, dive team is pretty unique, um, that's something that they specialize in, they have that specialty in, so we didn't wanna let that one go. But auto extrication is kind of the one thing that we knew we just couldn't do anymore. Um, the training that goes with it, um, requirements to meet, we can't do it any longer. So, we're in the process of discussing, we've been good about it, we've had a designee from each department as well, one of my staff members, one of his staff members, meeting about equipment, um, and everything else, just to make sure that everything went smoothly for all staff involved.
Okay, about the transfer of the assets and the, I mean, is there gonna be transfer of assets and equipment?
Yes.
They're both departments of the city.
But doesn't matter.
There's nothing being sold to anybody. Um, there's no, we've, we honestly, I can tell you that we have not budgeted for it in the last couple of years because we've had little turnout. So there's nothing that's gonna change, for me anyway, for Scott, he's probably gonna have to add a little bit more to the budget. Um, one thing that we're working out with Fire is that some of our personnel that have the certifications, have been through the training and have been doing this for a while, will be able to continue on with Fire. So that's something that we wanted to make sure happened, is that they had that opportunity to be able to continue. So the only thing that Scott would be adding, from my side of things anyway, would be just addition of some of the staff, and we don't even know if any of the staff will yet. We are planning a meeting to talk to them about it, um, who wants to continue, um, so we don't even know how many people at this point either.
And we could take an estimate and if we needed to move money from one budget to another, we can do that, but...
And we, like I said, we haven't had, uh, maybe a handful of people that have shown up in the past two years for rescue calls. We just, we staff our ambulances is our main priority.
Okay, questions?
I'll move to approve the transfer of rescue services from St. Cro EMS to the Hudson Fire Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Chief St. Martin, anything?
I know, it's just, uh, it's been a pleasure working with, uh, the chief here and Kim, I think in the long run it's gonna be the best for everybody. We're gonna be able to keep some of their people on, eventually the ones that wanna stay on. Um, in the end, with the transfer equipment, I think we're, our goal is to eventually replace our fire engine sixty-one, which is due for replacement, and make that into a, a crash rescue engine. They'll be able to utilize the old rescue rig because they replaced their existing dive truck and what will, yeah, so eventually with, long-term, in the short-term, we're gonna try and convert one of our rigs to, for short-term only, but long-term, we'll end up actually downsizing between the two of us by one, um, vehicle, which really, in the long run, saves some money on, um, maintenance and everything else. So it's gonna be, for the meantime, it's gonna be kind of rough because we're gonna have to wait till we can, you know, budget for that replacement, but that needs to be replaced, so when we do that, we'll dovetail that in, add the crash rescue portions, just a little more storage in that, so in the end, it should, long-term, kind of save a lot of money and have a little bit less equipment and one less rig hopefully to store and so on.
That sounds good.
But in the meantime, it's gonna be, you know, we're just gonna try and have to make it, make do with what we have and, and move some equipment around and stuff, but, uh, so is that, is any other questions?
Something, good work.
Good work.
Yep, good job, you guys. Yep, very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion, possible action on affirming the proclamation of a municipal emergency disaster related to excessive rains and flooding. Devin, you want to?
Kim approached me, and there are potentially some funds available through the state, correct?
Yes.
And the county, not through the federal, but through the state and county. For the flood damage, there's some damage to the Dyke Road, potentially, some erosion took place, and because of the value, we've now reached over a hundred thousand dollars with that and other issues, that potentially there's some grant money. So the mayor did a proclamation, you know, declaring it a disaster similar to what we did last year with the, the big storm, but in order for us to be eligible for the state, any, any state money that might be there, we don't know if we'll get anything or not, this proclamation has to be done, and you, as a council, have to affirm the proclamation.
Can we tie the Walnut Bridge into that?
Sure. Good luck, but, I don't know, but...
Is there damage due to the flooding?
As far as you know.
Then off the record, I can't approve that right now.
Good job, Kim.
Basically, the council just needs to affirm the proclamation.
Are you in Chicago or what?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
It's not with Randy's a little bit, is it? No, I'm just kidding.
We're ignoring him. But a good thought. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
They take us to the cleaners now.
Anything for future agendas from council members? City attorney? City administrator?
Two things I just wanted to mention. In the event that you were to make a change to the liquor ordinance, you know, before it takes effect, it has to be published, so you wouldn't be able to act on the license the same night you pass the ordinance. I just wanted to mention that, so if it's on the next agenda and the license application isn't, so you weren't wondering what we were doing. And the election is on August eleventh, the partisan primary, starting next Monday, correct?
August twelfth.
I'm sorry, August twelfth. Whatever the Tuesday is, no, it's August twelfth. In-person absentee voting will begin next Monday, the twenty-eighth, and run through Friday, the eighth. That can be done here at City Hall at the front desk.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I do have something to make sure we have in regards to the parking bids being open for that additional parking or on First Street.
Uh-huh.
We need to know if parking meters were included in that, and we need to have that conversation about parking meters down there.
Have you? New parking spots.
Whether we're going to meter them or not, I think is what...
So you'd like that on?
And whether or not the funds for the meters are included in the bids. Yeah.
So...
There was separate, if I remember.
Whatever agenda that is on
Yes.
we need to talk about parking meters
Yes.
as part of the project.
Because I don't recall it was.
Okay.
Tom, do you remember if, if the meters were in that?[1721.60]